Bear it down, try to give me as much head up as you can as to win.
Store.
How do you know?
Near the exit, but that could jam.
Okay.
But it's the traffic on Barburg.
All right, appreciate it.
Really messes up getting out of there.
It's interesting that they haven't done it.
Hmm?
They mentioned whether they'll get a.
No. Not to my knowledge. Let us say, I can't partici- I couldn't participate in that one anyhow, so.
That's about risky.
I'm in the notifications.
We shall see.
I mean, I appreciate having the gas station there because that's where my wife and I generally buy gas, but I know there are a lot of people that don't like it, so.
Sam started, Sam.
Good evening, welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The commission, the members of the commission have been appointed by the city council and the county board of commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. So you should know that the elected officials have the final say in any issue that's before us this evening. If you wish to speak on an agenda item this evening, you can sign up to the table on my left, on your right. And each side will get ten minutes to speak for and against each item on the agenda. And the time will be divided by each of the members who are signed up to speak. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Al Turk.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bryan.
Present.
Commissioner Satterfield.
Here.
Commissioner Durkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hyman.
Present.
Chair Busby.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchin is currently absent. Commissioner Hornbuckle.
Present.
Commissioner Gibbs.
Present.
And Commissioner Williams is excused.
Great, thank you. We will move to the approval of the minutes and the consistency statement from our October ninth, twenty eighteen meeting.
Do we need a motion for Commissioner Williams?
Ah, yes, we do, thank you very much.
I move the excused absence for Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Commissioner Bryan. We'll move to the approval of the minutes and the consistency statement. I know we had one correction, Commissioner Hyman, Vice Chair Hyman?
Yes, Mr. Hornbuckle had asked for an excused absence, and I wanted to make a motion that we do this at this time retroactively from the last meeting. If that's appropriate.
I'll second the motion.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, that was just the excused absence, you haven't done the minutes yet.
We haven't done the minutes yet.
Still waiting for George to tell us whether they were all right.
Well, I'll.
Do we?
I'll move approval of the minutes and consistency statements from the October meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So, moved by Commissioner Bryan, seconded by, we'll say Commissioner Miller, because I heard him the fastest, I guess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Sarah Young with the Planning Department, filling in for Gray Smith tonight, who is out unexpectedly ill. So, first thing as an adjustment is that you have at your seats your twenty nineteen proposed meeting calendar that you will need to approve this evening. I suggest that we add that as an item under new business. In addition, we have, as I think I promised, I don't know how many meetings back now, we were going to start doing more regular updates on long-range planning projects, and Mr. Scott Whitman is here tonight to deliver the first in a series of updates related to a variety of his projects. So I would ask that we also add that at the end of your agenda.
Great, thank you very much.
But, I'm not done.
But wait, there's more.
There's more. So Miss Smith wanted me to relay that she will be sending out via email the what's next upcoming items, since she was not able to do that. And the last thing is, I'd like to state for the record that all public notice requirements were carried out in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits for all those notices are on file in the Planning Department.
Excellent, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the approved updated agenda with the addition of the two agenda items, the new projects and the twenty nineteen meeting dates.
Motion to approve adjustments to the agenda as stated.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. So we will move to our first item on the agenda. This is a zoning map change for Comstock Industrial, case Z one eight triple zero one zero. Thank you. We'll start with the staff report.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Sonjak with the Planning Department. I will be presenting case number Z one eight zero 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 ten. This is Comstock Industrial. The applicant is Patrick Biker of Morningstar Law Group. The subject site is two parcels, forty-five oh nine Page Road and fifty-five oh five Comstock Road. The property is currently located within the city limits pending an annexation application. The applicant proposes to change the two parcels, which total seven point eight seven nine acres, from rural residential to industrial light. There is no development plan associated with this request. The property is designated industrial on the future land use map, which is consistent with the rezoning request, and the proposal is for all uses within the industrial light district. The aerial map shows the two properties highlighted in red hatch. They are currently located within the southeastern portion of the county, near the Wake County border. They are bisected by Comstock Road. The northern property is triangular in shape, and it is point six nine one acres in size. And the southern property is the larger of the two, that is seven point one eight nine acres. The site is located within the suburban tier and the Neuse River Basin. These photos depict the existing site conditions and some of the area surrounding. The properties as shown on the aerial and also in the photos are vacant and heavily wooded. The southern property contains floodplain and stream corridor along the eastern property boundary. There are wooded lands to the west and to the north. There's a medical building under construction at the corner of Page Road and Arrington Park Drive. There are residential developments to the south and to the east. Comstock Road ends at the Wake County border, and a school is located on the north side at the terminus of the road. And additionally, there are vacant woodlands and overhead utility lines located to the east. Also, Page Park and Sterling Residential Developments are located to the northwest off of Page Road. This slide shows on the left the existing zoning. The properties are in the rural residential yellow shade, and on the right, they are highlighted in purple, posed for industrial light. This is the future land use map, which shows the property in purple, which is the industrial designation, as well as small piece within the recreation open space, which will not change. This slide highlights the industrial light dimensional standards, just giving you an idea of if and when a development occurs, some of the standards that they would have to adhere to. And in terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan and policies, the property is consistent with, or the proposed industrial light zoning designation, rather, is consistent with the current industrial designation on the future land use map and applicable policies. It is consistent with policy two three one A, as the proposed industrial zoning is compatible with the office and institutional zoning to the west, the mixed-use zoning to the south and to the east, and the industrial light zoning to the west, as it allows many of the same uses, as well as policy two three two A. The existing infrastructure, such as the roads, water, and sewer capacity are sufficient to accommodate the potential impacts. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing, and we have one individual signed up, Mr. Patrick Biker. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Busby, Vice Chair Hyman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Patrick Biker of Morningstar Law Group, I live at two six one four Stewart Drive here in Durham. Let the record reflect, I'm here tonight so that Neil Gosh can have the night off. I'm here tonight representing Page Road Land Co. LLC for this zoning map change, and I, first of all, want to thank Jamie for an outstanding staff report on this item. Next, I'd like to discuss briefly our team's decision not to submit a development plan with this zoning map change to IL. Our client is just the property owner and not a developer. And we do not have an end user in mind or under contract or any relationship in regard to the seven point eight acres that y'all are looking at tonight. However, what we do think is important for the Planning Commission to consider is that Duke University Health System owns about forty-five acres to the south of this site. It's under construction, as Commissioner Bryan shared with me, the first phase. And the IL district gives our client flexibility to serve the needs that arise from whatever Duke Health System does with its new campus in this location. The IL district allows for a limited service hotel, or medical office space, or a restaurant, depending on what use or uses would be most synergistic with Duke Health's services at this location. Since we do not have an end user at this time, it's impossible to scope a traffic impact analysis. But once an end user is identified, the TIA will be done in conjunction with the site plan. I also think it's important to note that this area of Durham, which is east of Page Road and west of five forty, and then south of Longistics Way, is developing as a good quality light industrial area. Many of you on the Planning Commission will remember the zoning map change for Lawn Beverage earlier this year, and Lawn Beverage is less than a mile north of the property you all are looking at tonight. Keep in mind, Durham City ordinances, including but not limited to the UDO, place limits on the noise, lighting, building height of no more than fifty feet, and also impose significant project boundary buffers under UDO section nine point four. Accordingly, for all those reasons, we respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. I know you wanted me to take up all ten minutes, but I'm sorry to let you down in that regard. And so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item before we close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just curious as, in regards to the request, absent of a development plan, just for my curious nature. It seems that the request that you're making is in line with the future land use map. And so, is it, can you provide some thinking on, absent of this request being granted, would it make it more difficult for you to shop this parcel to end users? Or, the flip side is, why is it, would it be possible for you to shop this parcel to potential end users, knowing that the future land use map is essentially in your favor in what you're asking?
The problem we've got, Commissioner Johnson, is that the property right now is owned rural residential with no access to water and sewer, which makes it adequate for playing cornhole. But I don't know what else you could do on it. And you could build, it's in your staff report, you could build houses on one acre lots with well and septic, so it's not even marketable with its current entitlements. I don't think anybody really looks at the future land use map in terms of end users. They would say, well, that's what the future land use map says, but in terms of entitlements, it's, whatever it is in your staff report, I apologize for not remembering it off the top of my head, but what is it, nine single-family houses? That dog won't hunt when you go out to the market. So, what does make sense, and I remember driving up and down Page Road with Commissioner Becky Heron, talking about a blast from the past, and her saying, we really need more industrial development out in this part of Durham. So it's been a goal for our community for, golly, that must have been ten, that was probably fifteen years ago. And we're seeing it happen with the Lawn Beverage case that y'all approved, and that didn't have a development plan for the expansion of Lawn Beverage. So in terms of, can we market it with our zoning, you really can. Hope that answered your question.
A follow-up, please? And so is the intent of the property owners to sell this land to a developer or to lease it for?
Probably sell it.
And so I ask this question because, you know, there are cases where the zoning, a zoning change would increase the value of it, but developer or acquirer of the property would make the purchase contingent on them being able to get, you know, the request that you're coming here tonight with, so I'm just, you know.
That's usually what happens. I'm usually here representing a developer who has a piece of property under contract, but that's just not the case here. He's a property owner, and we looked at the future land use map, we looked at the Duke Health System campus, and we decided that residential really wasn't a good fit here, so IL makes good sense, and it's in line with Durham County and the city of Durham's goals for this part of our community.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you. Other Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miller, and then Commissioner Hornbuckle?
Patrick, I agree with you that because the property is currently designated for industrial use under the future land use map, that your zoning's in line with that and is supported by current city policy, but you have to push back a little bit on your statement that what's happening over here is an industrial area. When, in the immediate vicinity of this property, what's happening is residential. I drove all over.
Oh, yeah, sure, to the south.
It's residential in every direction except for the Duke project. And then, down at the end of Comstock, there is a non-residential development down there. But that's in this other purple area.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm only referring to the area that, if you went north from this site to Lawn Beverage.
Right, and.
Appreciate that.
All throughout this area between the, what I would call the suburban area, the real, the developed suburban area and the Wake County line on this side of I forty, we have, we're developing a crazy quilt of industrial and residential projects, which I wish we were not doing, but since we get these requests one at a time, we have a tendency not to remember what we did already. I would love to have us look sometime and try to make sense out of this in terms of some sort of comprehensive approach to redrawing the lines on the future land use map. But in terms of this particular project, because of its proximity to the Duke development just further down, and because I noticed that you say that your, a use for this property may be a hotel. It's not that far from I forty. The land between here and I forty is, some of it is clearly wet and not a good, not good site for any kind of development.
That's about all we have left in Durham.
So, I can't say that the way this is shaping up here, a hotel use or an office use consistent with the industrial light zone bothers me that much. I would not want to see a Lawn Beverage type facility here, but it wouldn't be the end of the world, I suppose. I'm going to support your request, but I do think that in this particular part of the county, residential seems to be the trend.
Yeah, it's a pretty small parcel, so to perhaps allay your concerns, south of Comstock Road, it's only seven acres. So it's not like it's a twenty, twenty-five acre site that we can build something on.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Patrick just reminded me with his comment about the small parcel. Is the parcel on the other side of Comstock Road, the portion of this property that's over there, is that really usable for much zone?
Probably be something we use as our, meeting our open space requirement. Probably be used for meeting our open space requirement.
Right, that makes sense, thank you.
Yes, sir, thanks. Commissioner Hornbuckle, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Biker, I totally support the project, I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
I remember many years ago, when old Mr. Page was still living in that area, and I used to, as a deputy, I would stop in and speak with him.
Sure.
Part of that, somewhere in, I see a lot of it is still some wooded area.
Yes, sir.
I recall him taking me back in the woods back in there, and he had a cemetery for his old mules back in there. And I didn't know if that was on this piece.
No, it's to the north.
It's a little north of that. I knew he had a large chunk of land in there, and that's why I just wanted to.
Between this site and Lawn Beverage.
I just wanted to see if it was, you know, if that was in this piece or not. I couldn't recall where it was, it's been many years ago.
My belief is not. But yeah, there is still Page family property between this site and the Lawn Beverage site that y'all.
Right, well, he's probably the only person that ever did, but he did have, it was a cemetery in there.
No, I remember that, yeah.
And they had his old farm mules.
Yeah, referred to the residential projects, Commissioner Miller, we had to work with the Page family on temporary construction easements for the widens of Page Road up and down through there, and so we've spent some quality time with the Page family.
Great, Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes, sir.
I keep pushing this button, I'm still not used to this on-off thing. Anyway, we're really learning some interesting history. I always like to hear those kind of comments, because it does go to Durham's character, Durham County, Durham City, whatever. But I intend to support this. It's, any of the allowed uses, I think, would work in this, on this tract. When there is no development plan, it's up to our imaginations as to what could go here. But at any rate, I think it's a good move for the property owner, and it's not out of step with anything else that's going on around this patchwork area. So I intend to support it. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
I have a comment, I don't have any questions, so if anyone else has questions before, say anything.
The floor is yours.
All right. So I want to thank staff for the work that they did on this, for the analysis that they conducted. I think that they did a really good job. This has lots of great information, made it really easy to understand what was being proposed. They did their legwork. I want to make a quick statement, I don't necessarily want to persuade anyone of any, of anything here, but I do want to voice some of my concerns with this project. It's coming before the Planning Commission, and I think that we can make a thoughtful recommendation for the best of the health, welfare, and safety of the community. I noticed that in the evaluation and assessment report that we received from staff under section five transportation, it mentions recent trends indicating growing locational demand for housing in more compact neighborhoods. It also mentions that the Triangle region has historically been one of the nation's most sprawling regions. So I think that that's something to sort of step back and consider when we're looking at, yes, it's a small, it's a small parcel in a big city. Yes, sprawl is a big word, and it can mean a lot of different things. But this is, in many ways, or can be sprawl. It could be a lot of different things. It could turn into industrial, it could become a wrecking yard. It could be used for something, a use that's more compatible with adjacent neighborhoods or with hospital uses. And so I think that that's something to consider. It's also currently being used, it's being used, it's forested. That's important for society, you know, the trees and the wildlife habitat and everything else that goes along with it, the positive impacts that that has on the climate and those types of things. It's not going to remain that way. I also don't believe that it will be developed residentially, I don't think it'll be developed as rural residential. And so there are opportunities, a lot of great opportunities for this site. To me, zoning this industrial light, which actually permits not industrial, not just industrial, but a lot of commercial and other types of uses, in many ways is kind of a blank check. It's a blank check, and right now, we kind of have an opportunity to say, well, you know, we can, why don't we come back with something else? I don't even think that a development plan is necessary. I don't think that we always need to know at this stage what's going to be developed. I think that those types of things, you know, can be handled by staff and can be handled in the UDO. So I wanted to voice that concern, just wanted to say that I probably won't be supporting this. But just wanted to voice that, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to comment.
Let's just wait one moment, since no one has directly asked you a question at this point, we need to wait a moment.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct some.
So my comments is a response to what was just shared here. So I'm just curious as to, is it the absence of a development plan, which you stated is not necessarily needed here, but what would you need to see to assuage whatever discontent that has you not in support of what's before us this evening?
So I would be interested in something that guarantees that we'll see some sort of development that would be, that would provide green building, that would potentially provide less of a sprawl type of development. We don't just need to think, in my view, we don't just need to think about the uses, we also need to look at the form. This requires huge setbacks off of the street, and I think that we'll ultimately end up seeing a lot of the sort of business-as-usual type of commercial development or hotel or whatever, whatever the next property owner wishes to put on their property. So I think the lack, the lack of knowing, the lack of guarantees, that something good, something that doesn't perpetuate the types of sprawl development that we see, that is a little bit more sustainable in its orientation. And of course, you know, we have to consider the context of the area. Yes, it's not developing, it's not going to be a new urbanist community, it's not going to develop out that way. But, you know, we only get a few opportunities to really be critical of these types of applications, and zoning is a powerful tool. And so I think that, you know, when we're looking at it, when we're looking at the zoning, that this is an important moment for us to be considering, you know, do we want to push the community forward, and do we want to be talking a little bit more about more sustainable development?
Commissioner Johnson, any other questions?
Thanks.
And Mr. Biker, I'd like to ask, give you the opportunity to make any additional comments and reaction.
I believe there was a reference to a wrecking junk or salvage yard. That would require a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. It is not an as-of-right use in this district.
That's correct.
Again, I want to thank Jamie for putting a very, for putting the list here, and I believe the lists of permitted uses demonstrates that this request is appropriate for this section of Durham County. Thank you.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to just highlight what BPAC's recommendations were, and I wanted to ask staff a question. So because we don't have a development plan, we typically see a commitment to five feet of asphalt for a future bike lane. Is there anything in the UDO that would require a bike lane without that commitment for this property? Or? I assume the answer is no, right? Or...I assume the answer is no, right?
Earl and Thomas Transportation. So no, there's nothing in the UDO that would automatically require the additional asphalt for bicycle lane. If there are facilities planned in our approved bicycle and transportation plans, we would look at those as they apply.
And what would those be, those facilities? What do you mean if they are approved in the bike and plan?
In the long range.
The long, okay.
Plans.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then I guess I am curious why, I mean, I'll just, I'll reiterate the question that BPAC had, which is why not, you know, propose a commercial designation for this rather than an IO to more align with the potential proposed use?
Because commercial would support residential uses, and I agree with Commissioner Miller, I don't think that we need more residential in this part of town. So that's why we did not pursue a commercial zoning designation.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
So to follow up on what Commissioner Al Turk has said, I was looking at the BPAC recommendations too. And I know the staff has added comments to the comments. I find nothing wrong with either of the two questions that BPAC has raised, and we have rehearsed them here and talked about them. And I don't think that we've necessarily all come down on the same side of it, but I do think they are appropriate. And so, and I'm grateful to them for raising both issues. I mean, ultimately, we have to send this forward with a recommendation either for or against. And I think these are considerations that all of us can weigh, and I'm grateful to them for bringing them up. In this instance, if I may respond to your point, I think that had they applied under the BPAC question number two here, an application for another zoning category, like office institutional or commercial, would have required a comprehensive plan change. And they probably didn't want to incur the expense, quite frankly. I'm just guessing. Patrick can answer that. So if he's going to change the zone, he's looking for zones that are allowable in that purple part of the map. And there are essentially two of them, industrial and industrial light. So I think that's what's driving this, is a desire to be consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. And I get that. I also would prefer more specific understanding. I also don't like to write blank checks. But considering the broadest range of things that might go in here, and assuming, as we are required to do by North Carolina law, that the developer will put in as much as, that if the developer put in as much as he could under the table of permitted uses, would it be okay? And to me, the answer to there under, in this case, is yes. So that's why I'm looking for it. I admit that there is possible, I suppose. I would be disappointed if other things went in one over another, but it doesn't worry me that much. But I get the point, and it's a good one, and I think it's something we really need to look at. But I would like to look at it not seven acres or nine acres at a time. Would really love to have a session where we sat down and we got a bigger map of this portion of Durham County and decided whether or not our future land use map actually makes sense.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Commissioner Miller's comments reminded me of a question that I had for staff, which was, that I also was struck by the comment from staff that it's not appropriate for BPAC to recommend the type of application. And I'm, because this is the first time I've seen this from staff, and I'm curious because I am the liaison to BPAC, so I can tell them why they should or should not do this.
Sarah Young with the Planning Department again. So BPAC's role in the development review process is limited to making recommendations on bicycle and pedestrian-related issues, amenities, related to what our plans say we need, what the ordinance may require, although there is also transportation staff that looks at those same things. So we have seen a consistent trend from BPAC, asking applicants, basically questioning why they didn't do a development plan. There are lots of things, and that's really kind of outside the purview of BPAC.
But if their goal is to promote bike and pedestrian facilities without a development plan, they cannot assess whether, or is that, is that not correct? That they cannot assess whether there will be a five-foot asphalt for future bike lane? So that's, it seems to me within the purview...
Honestly, part of it, I think, is also an educational issue. In terms of being familiar with what is on our adopted plans, in terms of future proposed amenities and transportation improvements, which will be asked for at the time of site plan, and the developers will have to comply at that point. So one of the things that Gray Smith and I have talked about is actually coming, this is a little premature, but you asked, so I'll answer, is coming to BPAC at an upcoming meeting and having a talk about the role of BPAC in development review and how to make sure that you guys find the most effective avenues to push good transportation planning and good multimodal amenities and connectivity through what you're doing. But we have consistently heard from applicants their concern that they're being put on the spot and basically interrogated, questioned as to why they haven't done a development plan and not seeing the direct relevance.
Okay, thank you. If I may, one more question first.
You may.
And again, this is on the issue of whether commercial or industrial designation makes sense. So the proposal is for potentially a commercial development in an industrial zoning, but it would be consistent with a comprehensive plan. Is that preferable to having, you know, the use not aligned with the future land use map? So, you know, to me, this seems like there's, you can either be consistent with the future land use map, or you can, the uses can be consistent, right? And so what is preferable from a planning perspective?
So honestly, I think that's where there is some judgment and some give and take. The future land use map is intended to be the city's and the county's plan for. This is the type, in general, of development that we want in this area. So looking at it from that perspective, at some point, the city and the county said industrial is what we want here. Now, having said that, most, if you look at our ordinance, most of our zoning districts, except for the residential ones, allow a whole lot of different uses. They really are not single-use districts strictly. And so you do get some amount of overlap. Part of that, I think, is good in that, you know, we have a comprehensive plan policy that talks about contiguous development and things kind of feeling like they continue to merge and fit into each other. If we took that really literally, you could only ever have one use in the entire city and county, right? Because you'd have to constantly match what was next to you, and that's clearly not the intent. So I think the intent of having zoning districts that allow kind of a range of uses that can kind of merge from one category to another helps do that blending of contiguous development where you may have different land uses, I mean, different specific uses in a land use category.
Thank you, Sarah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? And before we take a motion, because I don't see any other questions and comments, I do just want to say, actually, I appreciate this conversation. I think it's really helpful for us to be able to ask direct questions of staff or the applicants or talk to each other. And so I think that's really healthy, and I always learn something from that as well. So I appreciate this conversation and some of the questions that have been raised. That said, I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
I move that we send Case Z1810 forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
And just for the record, this is Case Z180010? Did I...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, when you add three zeros together, I still think you have nothing.
I never stop learning at this meeting. Properly moved and seconded, and we'll have a roll call vote, please.
No.
Learning. Mr. Al Turk, no. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Busby?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kenshin?
Yes.
Mr. Hornbuckle?
Yes.
And Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next on our agenda appropriately is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. This is Case TC18008, text-only development plan.
Thank you, Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Text Amendment TC18008 would establish a limited text-only development plan option for zoning map changes requests to allow proffers that limit uses allowed within requested zoning district. This alternative, limited in scope, as staff develops a more comprehensive set of revisions for alternatives to the current development plan requirements. Basically, the proposed changes would be, or the commitments that would be made would be incorporated into the ordinance for adoption. Commitments will be limited at this time to proposed uses and can be proffered at any time during the review and adoption process. And the de-designation that you see commonly for development, specifically for development plans, would still apply to the zoning designation. It's in response to frustrations we've heard from elected officials and even, I believe, even some planning commissioners that there are really just two options before you at this time, a straight rezoning that you just heard right now, and the full-blown development plan option, which requires an applicant to put forward thousands of dollars' worth of consulting time to develop plans that show a lot of things. But ultimately, the goal of the development plan is to allow applicants to proffer additional commitments that are beyond ordinance requirements. And many of those commitments don't need to be graphic in nature. Sometimes they're very helpful to be graphic in nature, but a lot of times they don't. And we've seen, we've sat here in meetings, and like, an applicant would just want to commit to a certain height. And they don't have a development plan, and everybody would be fine if they could just commit to that height, and the applicant was ready to do it. But there wasn't a real option between the two that were already on the books. So this is an initial step. We are also taking a look at, if and when this does get adopted, furthering it to develop a more comprehensive list of items that could be in a text-only development plan, and what that would look like in more detail if you're adding more items to it. Maybe there are some graphics that could be added to it to add to what the meaning of that commitment is without calling, without having to do those larger development plan projects. Again, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. And we do have a public hearing for this item as well, is that correct?
Yes.
We will see if there's any, anyone signed up. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone who would like to speak? Great, okay. Seeing none? Commissioners, questions, comments, feedback? Commissioner Bryan?
In view of the case that we just dealt with, one potential use that I see for this, and I want to make sure I understand how it would work, is that, you know, they didn't know exactly what they wanted to do, but they could have provided a list of things that they would not do. Is that correct?
That's correct. At this point, it would be listed, it would be limited to a range of uses that you'd find on your use table. But the goal is to even go beyond just that list and be able to provide those, those proffers that don't require a visual or graphic.
Thank you.
Commissioner Durkin?
I just had a question on that visual thing. Is there any kind of room to provide a visual depiction of some sort in this capacity outside of a full-blown development plan?
For this...
It's kind of nice to visualize, especially placement of certain things or...
Right. Well, in this, in this limited case, you're just talking about uses. So you're either, you're saying you can't do a shopping center, or you're okay with a shopping center for that, within that zoning district. The idea that we're looking at when we go beyond that list, when you see some text amendment in the future, would be, okay, if you were going to, the applicant was agreeing to a larger buffer, do you need a full-blown development plan for that specifying larger buffer? Or was text, and maybe a supplemental graphic with that text is doable? So that's what we're looking at for the future.
Commissioner Miller?
So you said something that interested me, because I read it as being, we're really just kind of fooling with the use table. But you suggested that we've had cases, and we have had cases, where it would be easy to add a text commitment saying that it's not going to be, that instead of the 50 feet, it's going to be 42 feet. That's not use. Would that be allowed under this?
No, I was just, as an example, that was just something I was on top of.
But you say that may be where we're headed.
That's where we are heading with it. I've been working with Jamie's team with developing and looking at what kind of revisions we can make to add that more, more robust third option or middle ground option that would include maybe height limitations and other limitate, other proffers or limitations offered by the applicant that, again, wouldn't necessarily require a graphic. We were given a direction to kind of go with just uses at this point in time.
And procedurally, as I understand it, that, at least as it's currently proposed, right up until City Council, we could fool with items on the lit, on the use table, you know, pull them off.
Right.
Or say, these three only, or this one only, do that right up till then without causing delay.
Correct. Yeah, the idea is to allow that flexibility for when a public hearing happens, or even through the application review process, that something comes about, when they've been talking to neighbors or something like that, to allow that flexibility to make those proffers without having to change the application substantially.
Right, because messing with the use table, we're moving the checkers, but we're not, we're not making them bigger or smaller or different shapes.
Right.
All right, thank you. I understand. I appreciate it.
And actually, as a follow-up to Commissioner Miller, if I may, so basically, I just want to understand the way this would work is that a staff report might indicate if the applicant, during the application process before it even came to us, took use of this, right? It might say they've already eliminated these. We would still see the use table, but it would note that these, these uses have been eliminated or taken off. And then, obviously, during the hearing process, we might go further than that.
That makes absolutely sense. Yeah, I believe they would incorporate that into your staff.
And at some point, this would be written down and made a part of the application.
Yes, but ultimately, as it occurs, so either they amend their application during review, or when they go and have your public hearing and you make your recommendation of approval, it would be with the proffers of whatever uses they've limited themselves to. And then that would move forward to elected bodies, City Council or Board of Commissioners, depending on the jurisdiction. And then they would see that, and they'd be, that's good, or we want more, or whatever. And then whatever is adopted is just, there's always an ordinance of adoption, and those commitments would just be part of that ordinance of adoption.
Great. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. So just to make sure I heard, what I heard is, I'm interpreting it correctly. So Mr. Miller says that this tool will be able to be utilized up until the council acts on it. So if we go through the process and do whatever we do with the use tables, restriction, exceptions, or whatnot, and it's voted upon, it can still change between what we vote on and what the council ultimately decides. So the council can come and change the uses from what was voted on here in regards to the...
They can, yes. I mean, it would be a proffer from the applicant. I mean, it's not them mandating a change. Development plans are meant to be proffers agreed to by the developer, just as you would with a development plan in front of you now. You'd raise a concern, and they'd say, oh, yeah, you know how we could address this concern? We can limit this use so we don't allow the wrecking, wrecking yard or whatever. And then you guys say, that's great, could we confirm with staff that that's an appropriate committed element? And it's just, it's the same process, except there's no big plans in front of you. It's just limiting to those kinds of proffers that you normally see anyway.
But one quick follow-up, because some, I may be a little fatigued mentally, so help me out here. So the way it currently works here, in the sense that if a development plan comes before this body and we vote on it favorably, let's say we voted on it favorably for the council, can that development plan be changed during the consideration by the council itself?
They have the authority to do that, yes.
Okay, so basically...
I mean, at the hearing, there's authority for that to happen.
So this would be pretty much consistent with how that...
Okay, exactly. There's, it's still a development plan, it's just text-only.
Commissioner Miller?
But there is a point between it, between the case being, coming to us and the time it gets to council, where proposed changes become so substantial, there's a magic line that can get crossed, and then it's a do-over.
Right.
But we're declaring, in the way this ordinance is written, that if this is, if you're just moving items in and out of the table of uses within the applied-for zone... you're just moving items in and out of the table of uses within the applied-for zone, that's not substantial, that's not a do-over.
Right, right. It's really enabling the applicant to address concerns.
It's more about form than it is about substance.
Right.
Because even today, if we had all the maps and everything, if all we changed were commitments about what, what items in the table of permitted uses would be in or out, you wouldn't consider that to be substantial.
No, I think that would be a pretty straightforward, you know, list. And that gets at your, the concern of what we're talking about for the next step. We want to kind of go over that list of things that may, what are substantial and not substantial, that kind of things, and, and it's going to be a tricky balance.
Commissioner Johnson?
As I was just curious, so there, should we assume that there's no cost associated with the applicant using this potential tool? So there's no, like, it costs to do a development plan, but-
There's additional costs for full-blown development plans. I don't think that you're looking, I don't know what the fee schedule would be like for this. That's something that I haven't-
We need to finalize-
Yeah, that needs to be finalized.
There would be a fee, just like there's a straight rezoning, but it would not be as high as like a development plan, so it's less for statutory, and our fees, by state law, have to align with the amount of effort that we put to the fee.
Follow. And so how much effort are you assuming you would have to do to look at a use table and say-
I would imagine it would be minimal effort.
So can we assume that the cost, the fee, the relative fee would be minimal?
I cannot make any assumptions at this point. I will let that be for the Assistant Director.
Forty-five cents.
So like, like I said, chances are it may be very comparable to what a straight zoning is. We haven't looked at that yet. There will be a fee, though. I don't want to, I don't want people in the audience or at home getting the idea that this is a free rezoning. So when we say that there is none, let's be clear that there is, less than a development planned zoning, and certainly the applicant, the main savings is that they don't have to hire a consultant to spend thousands of dollars developing the drawings. That right there is a cost savings, a major cost savings. It's a lot, lot, lot more than the fees.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the citizens of Durham understood that, that aspect of this request.
Thank you for your questions. We have now learned there is no such thing as a free rezoning. I, I did want to say, I want to thank the staff. I, I think this is, this is a really good step in the right direction. I know many of us are not always comfortable voting for a case that doesn't have a development plan because of the large number of uses, and, and as you just saw, many of us still will, will do it, but we're not always comfortable with it. This gives a level of comfort and moves us in the right direction and is very responsive to what you're hearing from, from us and obviously the governing bodies. I'm curious on the timing of the next phase. So, and I know you don't have the exact answers, but what's your sense of the next phase? How long do you think we will live with this interim regime if this does move forward and get approved, which I'm guessing it will?
I would hope so. Yeah, that's a good question. We have a couple other thing, big things on our plate right now, like we'd kind of like to at least get partially eaten up and digested, but I'm thinking probably we'll take it back up early next year to start looking at that. So this would be on the books for probably at least six to eight months before anything's really moving forward. And it might give it time to see how things work and play out too, which might be helpful.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
I move that we send the text amendment eighteen quadruple zero eight forward to the city council and the Board of County Commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call on this, or can we have a voice vote? Love a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again to the staff.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Our final public hearing this evening is the text amendment to the Durham Comprehensive Plan, so this is A one eight quadruple zero one, the year, the evaluation and assessment report. And we'll start with the staff report.
I'm Laura Woods with the Planning Department, and as you stated, this is case A eighteen zero 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 one, our annual evaluation and assessment report. For those of you, the few of you, I recognize from the last time I was here, you'll, you will recall that we usually do this earlier in the year. Unfortunately, this year, a host of special projects with tight deadlines kind of scuppered our plans, as it were, so we're a little late. Do not be surprised if the next annual report comes to you in the spring, in about five months. So, let us get started. The purpose of the report is to rectify differences between the city and county future land use maps, report on progress of plan implementation, proposed changes to policy language, proposed technical updates to the future land use map, and forecast planning issues and trends. In twenty seventeen, the city approved nine changes to the future land use map, and the county not a one. The change in land use acreages was fairly small, with the most significant being about forty-seven additional acres of commercial land, and about thirty-two acres of low-medium density residential with small declines, industrial land and office. Oh, before we get to that, the details on these plan amendments and also on zoning cases are in your staff report in tables, and the locations are shown in maps in the report. We have one policy recommendation change that I want to highlight. This is proposed by the Planning Department, and it has to do with the impact on housing affordability within neighborhood protection overlays. If you, if you don't mind, I'll read it out. Evaluate the net impact on housing affordability and housing supply in all received applications for neighborhood protection overlays and local historic districts. Planning staff shall recommend denial of NPO applications that have a negative impact on housing affordability or housing supply. This policy is intended to bring the comprehensive plan into conformance with affordable housing initiatives that are currently underway. We have one change recommended this year on the future land use map, and this is in the vicinity of Rose of Sharon Road. It's actually an extension, represents an extension of Ino State, River State Park. Three properties were acquired by the state, and those are indicated on the map shown here, also in Attachment Three of your report. And not only do they offer an extension of the park, they also offer sort of a, a path to the city's Durham, Durham, or the city of Durham's Spring Valley Park, or excuse me, Valley Springs Park. It's not one I'm familiar with, haven't been that way. So that is the extent of our changes recommended. We have expanded our trends this year since we have so very little changes, so I hope you don't, didn't mind the insight into land use and demographic changes in Durham and our assessment of emerging trends. That concludes my report.
We will open the public hearing, but we have no one that has signed up to speak. We'll give anyone in the audience the opportunity to speak. No one is coming forward, so we will close the public hearing. Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Just a question in regards to the affordable housing impact assessment and the proposed recommendation. Do you have an existing framework or methodology of what that impact assessment entails? And if so, and if not, will that mean net impact on affordable housing in the city, or is it the net impact of the purview of whatever, you know, overlay area that is under consideration?
The net impact within the historic district or the proposed NPO.
Additional questions, Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, thank you.
You're good? Okay, Commissioner Satterfield?
My question was along the same lines. What are the metrics that are going to be used to determine what that net impact looks like?
I think those yet, have yet to be determined.
Commissioner Miller?
So I have a problem with it too. We do have policies in the comprehensive plan, at least my quick scan of it, to talk about what it is we want out of our historic districts, and some criteria that, that help us determine or measure of when one is appropriate, where we want them and where we don't. As far as I could find, we don't have any policy whatsoever in the comprehensive plan that even contemplates the NPO. And I have a problem with having a, with having a device in the zoning code called the neighborhood protection overlay, having a comprehensive plan that doesn't recognize it, and then adding a, one policy in the comprehensive plan as it relates to the NPO, and it is unfavorable. We just considered at our meeting last time, changes to the rules about applying for an NPO that make it so difficult. Why don't we just propose to eliminate it? Because that seems what we're doing by, it's, it's death by a thousand cuts, and I, so I object to this policy. I don't think the metrics are there. I don't even know how you do it, how you evaluate it. I do think that's a very good question, is, is whether it's just inside the, the boundaries of the proposed district, or whether it's a net effect across the, the jurisdiction. I also have this problem with, if we're going to have policies that contemplate the NPO, we ought to start with policies that are about where an NP, what we're trying to accomplish within NPO, and put that in the comprehensive plan, and then if we want to curb NPO applications based upon how they perform with regard to housing affordability and, and, and housing supply, then we can work that in there. But to have just a negative policy, no, and no policy guidance at all for, for, for the tool, seems to me a lousy way to do comprehensive planning. So I'm going to vote against this.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Durkin?
I was just, in response to Commissioner Miller's statement, I'm excited that the staff is actually thinking about housing affordability and how we can bring that metric into our decision-making process. So I'm really excited, even though this needs to be fleshed out a lot, I'm excited by the idea that you're thinking about it and that we'll have more in front of us soon.
So, I, thank you. I, I had a question as well. So I, I had concerns about this as well. I appreciate you raising it in your report and putting it directly in front of us, because that was the one thing that jumped out at me as I read through this. So, and, and I agree with, with Commissioner Miller's concerns in a lot of regards. I think this is an important planning tool, if not the only citizen-driven planning tool where the citizens of this community are reacting to development proposals. This is the one tool that's available for citizens to bring something forward. That said, can you walk us through how you envisioned this would actually work? I don't mean the metrics, but I mean, if you decided, if the planning staff, and it says shall recommend denial of an NPO application that has a negative impact on housing affordability or housing supply, what happens next? Is that just your recommendation in your report to us when it comes to the Planning Commission? And, because I know there's a couple different proposals now that are moving on separate tracks, so I'm trying to wrap my head around, how does this actually move forward under current proposals, and how might it move forward if what we saw last month also gets put forward? Does that make sense?
It does. I'm Scott Waver from the Plane Department. So it would just be a recommendation, the, the Planning Commission and the governing body could still adopt an NPO if we determined that it had some negative effect on housing supply. This is in response to a lot of what we heard during the adoption of the Old West Durham NPO, is that there was concern that it would be opening the door to a lot of neighborhoods trying to clamp down on the amount of housing, or by greatly increasing lot sizes or greatly reducing density. We publicly stated that to council and probably the Planning Commission as well, that we believe the Old West Durham NPO did not do that. It just affected the scale of the housing in their, in their neighborhood. Excuse me. It did not actually affect the supply, but we felt we'd be in a better position to make that analysis if we had a comprehensive plan policy that was adopted.
And just to follow up, and then, then other commissioners, I'll call on other commissioners. If the proposal, if I understood the proposal that we saw last month, and we, we pulled that out, and we, we will see that again at some point, I assume, soon, that proposal would start with the staff making a, a recommendation to the governing body? Is that correct? If that proposal moved forward as currently drafted, and that may be getting reworked, so I don't, I don't want to get us tied up in knots. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get a sense of, I, I still have concerns with it. I have less concerns if the, if the staff report just says, we're going to vote denial because of concerns about affordability, and the Planning Commission and the governing body will still then have that opportunity to review it and, and make their decision. I, I still have concerns, I just think it's a little different.
Yeah, yeah, so absolutely, the planning staff does not get to approve or deny any zoning change, whether it's an NPO or a standard zoning map change. So we would just, we would provide our analysis and our recommendation. This is something that city council indicated they would, would want to hear from us if they had another NPO application in front of them. I will say, we are planning to bring the UDO changes about the NPO process to your December meeting as a standalone item.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So I am, I'm reminded by some of the comments that people have made, that in Article Three of the UDO, we incorporate our comprehensive plan into our UDO. And so if the planning staff then makes its evaluation and says that, that this is, recommends denial, it seems to me we have a confused situation. Does the case end? I think the people who, I'm, I'm just terribly troubled by this, and I don't think that, I know we've got, I have, I read in the newspaper, and I know that we have an application for an NPO from one neighborhood, and I know another neighborhood, I read in the newspaper, has met with the staff to explore whether they're looking at it. I wonder if they understand that these barriers are being set up in front of it. Why can't we just have an NPO process that, where the, it gets to the city council or the Board of County Commissioners, and they say, we're voting against it because we think it has a negative impact on housing affordability or housing supply? Why do we have to make these decisions before, before people even start, or after they start, and put all the work that we now propose to, to put them to, to get their application in front of people and find out that they wasted their time? I think this is, this is, this is the bad way of going about dealing with citizens and the one thing that they can do that, that lets them participate as an initiator in our planning and zoning process.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Thank you, Chair. You know, last month, we had proposed text amendment, and, and we discussed the NPO process, and I mentioned that I did not like the fact that we were potentially making it more difficult. And so I was glad that we took that part of, out of it, because I, I do think the NPO process is an important one. Having said that, I, I like this policy. I don't see any problem with the planning staff making or assessing the effect on affordable housing. We can, we can still have an NPO process, but have the planning staff assess the impact on affordability. At the end of the day, like staff has, has said, it is our decision, and it's really the governing body's decision whether to approve it or not. You know, so I, I'm always in favor of more information about all applications, and if, you know, I think we should make it easier to have an NPO process, but at the same time, we should have full information about the NPO and how, and its effects. So maybe the issue that we're having here, and, and I'm not sure if this is exactly what it is for, for some folks, that the language says that the planning staff will recommend denial. So I'm, I'm wondering, you know, is there any way where you can still have the assessment but not recommend, I mean, just have a neutral recommendation?
If I may interject, as someone who does- If I may interject, as someone who does a good deal with the quantitative analysis for the planning department, as you know, the MPO process is an iterative process. It usually takes a long time. There's no reason that the assessment could not take place during the development of the MPO, which would highlight a problem that might, there might be with the MPO before it gets to the point of a public hearing, before it becomes a completed product.
I will say, to answer Commissioner Al Turk's question, the Assistant Director just reminded me that the planning staff technically does not make recommendations on zoning changes, which this is one. So we'll refine that language so that it's not the, it's not so stark.
So you will take out the sentence that says, "Planning staff shall recommend denial"?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Turk. Okay, I see a few hands. So Commissioner Durkin, and then Commissioner Johnson?
A follow-up question related to Commissioner Al Turk's comment. Does this, the staff include any kind of analysis on affordability in an MPO application currently, or is this the vehicle that would allow you to do that?
We don't do it currently. We haven't had that many, so.
Okay.
We've only had one recently be approved. We do, as Commissioner Miller said, we do have one, an application currently in, and we've heard talks of others.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to echo support for the position put forth by Commissioner Al Turk. I think that anytime we can get value-add information in front of us to help us with our deliberation and decision-making, that is a good thing. However, I do, I do agree with striking out the "shall" provider recommendation, because I think that that's the charge of us. It's like, that's pointing the responsibilities of what us, and then ultimately the council is responsible from an elected officials and then an appointed position to do. And so I am all for additional value-add information, but I do think that the responsibility is up to us to make the decision regarding what do we do if that, the information is good, bad, or indifferent.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, this is unrelated to that topic, but I wanted to just bring out a few items in the report that I think are interesting and worth highlighting. One is under housing on page nine, looking at the increases in housing, in housing prices and housing costs. I think this is something that we need to be paying close attention to as a planning commission and as a city, especially looking at the increases in rent, because the types of people that are renting can often be people who have less means. And so, especially when rent is increasing at a higher rate than home prices, it makes it difficult to build up any wealth, to save up for a down payment if someone is trying to save up for a down payment to buy a house. I also wanted to just highlight something on page 13, the design districts in the UDO. I don't have an in-depth knowledge of those, but I wanted to raise this. I just wanted to applaud staff for, applaud staff and applaud everyone else who is behind putting in place the design districts. I think that this is something that's really important, that's needed in the city. I'd love to see more of this type of work happening. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Miller?
So while we're, I'm going to tie the two together. Impacts on housing affordability as they relate to NPOs in historic districts, quite frankly, isn't going to happen very often. If we really want to measure and get information on impacts on housing affordability and housing supply, we'd have this kind of analysis whenever we have certain kinds of major residential rezonings. Of course, with our design district process, once we go to design district and we apply the design district zones, there is no coming back. The developer builds what he wants to build inside the rules of the code. But I'll point out in our design districts, we don't require any residential at all. We could build a design district out completely without any residential. And to me, that's a policy failure. And if we want to have our hands on the levers, to the extent that the levers can accomplish anything with regard to affordability and supply, I think we need some rules that address the requirements for housing in design districts, since the design districts are supposed to be around places where we have transit stops, and that we also continue to have some sort of analysis of, or some way to analyze affordability. Because when I look at the same charts and tables you have, the rents that are jumping up aren't, it's not the, it's not the 1,800 square foot single-family house up in Argonne Hills. It's the new apartments that are being built around parking structures all over downtown. That's where the rents are going out. That's where housing prices are leaping out of control. But we have already given up all controls. There's no point in studying or analyzing housing, the impacts on affordability or supply there, because we created design districts, and if you own a piece of property in there, your next step is a site plan and a building permit. It's not going to come here. There's not going to be a vote. So I would like to change that, so that we stay in charge of, of the place where action in housing is actually happening, not in historic districts, which, once in a blue moon, and NPOs, which at our current rate are once in every 12 years.
So I don't see any other questions or comments. I did just want to follow up for staff, because I think you may have addressed my main concern. Do you mind just restating how you would plan to rephrase the language on the impacts on affordable, on affordability, on the housing affordability? I just want to make sure that I understand what you're planning to change, and it may be useful for other commissioners as well. Generally, not, I'm not going to hold you to the exact language, but just to me, I just want to make sure I understand where you're changing language.
We will definitely remove the phrase, "Planning staff shall recommend denial of MPO." We'll need to add some words generally so that it still makes a sense, but I'm not sure what those are at this particular moment.
But softer words?
It will definitely be softer.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Al Turk?
This is unrelated to affordable housing. Laura, you're, I wanted to point to table, sorry, figure one on page two. You show the net change in acres of the flum. I was kind of hoping there would be something similar for the zoning map changes. Do you have a sense of what, I mean, just looking at this list in table two, I was just trying to get a sense of, you know, what the net changes would be for zoning map changes. So I guess, you know, if there was some way to relate that or relay that to us at some point, that would be, I think, useful. But I was thinking more broadly, you know, I assume you do this kind of analysis for the last five years, the last 10 years. I think it would be good for us to see those net change in acres over a longer time period, because I think this is a really helpful, you know, overview. And I would love to see maybe, you know, five years or something, just so we can get a sense of, when we're deciding to change from, you know, residential to commercial, you know, what are we doing to the landscape as a whole, right? And how is that really going to affect affordable housing long term? So if there's, you know, any way to pass that along to us at some point, that would be great, but.
Would you be satisfied if I did it with the next report?
Yes, that would be great. Yeah, I'd hate to add more homework, but that would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, and then we'll accept a motion. Commissioner Miller?
I'll ask my question directly. I'm sure there's an easy answer, but embarrass, make me embarrassed for having asked a question.
Might be worth the extra minute. Good. I'll take a motion for approval at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the text amendments to the comprehensive plan, embodied in 18-001, forward to the city council and Board of County Commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
May I clarify the motion? With the changes that the staff indicated with regard to the policy text change.
Yes, thank you. Properly moved and seconded, we'll have a roll call vote for approval?
Mr. Al Turk?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Busby?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Kenshin?
Yes.
Mr. Hornbuckle?
Yes.
And Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Passes 11 to 1.
Thank you, and thanks to the staff for your work. We had two final items that we added, so we are going to review and vote on our 2019 meeting dates. And then we have project updates, which is a new feature to our meetings that we've been asking for for a while. Staff, anything on the 2019 meeting dates you need to add? No? So we have the dates in front of us. This keeps us on a regular schedule.
I move that we adopt the 2019 meeting schedule presented by staff.
Second. Great. Move by Commissioner Bryan, seconded by Commissioner Hornbuckle, and Commissioner Miller. Recognize you for a question or a comment on the motion?
Never mind. I'm a little concerned about the October 8th date, but since we always meet on Tuesday, and Tuesday is, election day is always on Tuesday, I know we'll have a primary in October, and I'm concerned that it might be the 8th, but we probably don't know the date yet, so there's no point in asking the question.
Staff?
We always amend later if we need to.
And we can do that.
We kept that in mind. We can amend later if we need to.
That's a great clarification. Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Mark your calendars. And finally, the long-awaited project updates. And again, we really appreciate that the staff is willing to take the time to put these together. We're hoping that these will be a regular feature when we don't have really, really long meeting agendas. Mr. Whitman?
Yes, and our intent is to do this quarterly-ish. We'll, if we have any meetings like your last one, we'll wait till the next one.
Thank you.
So Mr. Stock is passing out a memo that has a brief summary of some of the big projects that we'll have coming for you soon. I'll introduce them to you, or refresh your memory about some of these, and give you a quick status update. Feel free to ask me questions. So for the Patterson Place Compact Neighborhood, the, we held our last public meeting at the end of October. We have general consensus from most of the stakeholders. We are planning to do a briefing for the planning commission at your next meeting, and then plan for the public hearing at your January meeting. I'll say one, based on our last discussion, one thing to note about that is, it will include a version of the affordable housing density bonus that was adopted as an interim that will be incorporated as a permanent in this district. The expanding Housing Choice Project, we'll be having public open houses here at City Hall to discuss the details of the proposal on November 27th and November 29th. We are planning for a planning commission briefing in January, and the planning commission hearing in February. The rewrite of the signed section of the UDO, which I know Mike briefed you on a few months ago, we're still working on trying to find some compromises on a few sticky issues. So we're, we're not sure when it'll come back to you as a public hearing item, but sometime early next year. And the new comprehensive plan, for those who don't know, we received some funding in our budget to hire consultants to help with the engagement portion of our comprehensive plan. I'd like to thank some of you for either volunteering or having your arm twisted into helping us select that consultant. We are, let's see, the week of November 26, we're doing interviews for that, and we're planning to have a more engaged process to select the consultant than is normal in a process like that. And so we're including community members, development community members, as well as city and county staff.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner Gibbs?
My com, excuse me. My comment is, for the last item, I really do appreciate the information that y'all compiled. I'm going to be referring to this little packet, this little thing for a long time. There is some good information in here, and I do appreciate your efforts.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Just to clarify, so the consultant is just for outreach, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then are you hiring consultants to help with actual plan, or?
We will, we will do that in-house.
Okay. And have you started on that process, or not quite yet?
We have just, barely begun doing some of the initial research, and we'll wait till we have the consultant on board to kind of free up our time to, and to have some of these other projects work their way through the system. So we'll have more time to devote to the comprehensive plan.
Great, thank you. Ms. Yellen?
If I may, I noticed some concern perhaps expressed on some of the members' faces about the proximity of some of the PC briefings followed by public hearings, and I just wanted to let you know that we are well aware that you wanted more space. And however, these two projects are so far down the road, there's no time now to have an early-on briefing with the commission. These projects are nearing completion. And so that's why these couple of projects you see still follow the more traditional, our previous model of one month of briefing and the next month, the public hearing. But I just want you to know that you have been heard, and we are going to do everything to roll towards a new model where we bring you things early on. So I just wanted to mention that and not let anyone walk away thinking that they totally ignored us. But once projects are kind of towards the end of their lifespan, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to try and jam in an extra session with you all.
I, two things. One, I just did want to, speaking of feeling ignored, I want to make sure we note that Commissioner Kenshin has arrived. He arrived soon after we started, just for the record, for the minutes. I'm also just curious from staff, the, what is the path on the sign ordinance at this point? Because I know there are still comments coming in. What's the, just what are the steps at this point for that moving forward?
The steps, once we feel we have addressed some of the concerns of elected officials and the community, we'll bring it back to the planning commission.
So we're the first stop?
You're the first stop.
Okay.
And the bulk of it will remain the same. There's just a few things like signs in the right-of-way, as you might imagine, which are still creating some controversy.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I would just say, I know this may not fit the staff capacity. I, for one, this doesn't have to be a quarterly thing, where this is kind of a scheduled quarterly update. I think it's, it's helpful for us to get these updates and some more advanced updates as we get further down the path of this process. And so for me, it's much more about just looking at meeting agendas, and if we have smaller agendas like this evening, let's make sure that we're taking advantage of that time. If we have meeting agendas like last month, please do not add anything to the agenda. So that's just my take. I know the staff resources might not allow that, but I would encourage you to not think of it as having to be quarterly, given how the workflow comes to us.
I think that was the ish part of.
Yeah, okay. Great, all right. One more thing?
So one, another thing that I was going to ask, add if I may, is that Grace and I have been talking about, and this is not just for this commission, but for our other boards and commissions, whenever you have a light agenda, bringing some more, although I know we have our kind of biannual trainings with you all, bringing some more almost educational, you know, have a stormwater expert come and really talk about what happens at the site plan stage. Have someone from our development review group come and talk about the nitty-gritty of site plan, review, and approval for those that. of site plan, review, and approval, for those that may not be as familiar with it. So I think things that may give you all a better comfort level with some of the zonings that are less specific, let's say, as to what our development regulations in totality address or don't address. So we will look in coordination with the chair to try and, whenever we see you have a light agenda, slide some of those things in, if that's all right.
I think we would welcome that. Great, Commissioner Bryan?
Sir, I would really enjoy hearing the stormwater thing, because we've had so much rain recently that this business of a hundred-year storm may have to be revisited, and regulations may have to be updated and so forth.
You're just getting older faster, George.
And, and given that we just endured a two-hour delay of the public schools opening this morning, I would very much like to hear an update. Commissioner Miller?
This is something I mentioned a while back, and it makes me nervous every time I do any kind of training. Our emails with citizens and with each other and what have you are public records, and right now, like Hillary Clinton, I'm running mine through my one email address. I would feel a lot more comfortable if I had an email address that was over here, and if somebody wanted to see what somebody had said to me, or what I had said back, that it would be right there, and it would be segregated from all the other emails I get, and it won't rely on me searching up and down. I've been on the commission for four years now, I've only had two requests for emails, somebody who was on one side of a case asking for the email chain from, that I had with somebody on the other side, and I have done my best, and everybody seemed to be satisfied with it, but it, as an old city government, I mean, county government, never mind, too late. As an old state government guy, I would like to have all of that happen somewhere else. I do not know how big an ask this is, whether I can get a CI Durham email address that I can access, that everybody else can see too. It would also help to remind me that everything I am doing is there for somebody to see, and it could carry that thing at the bottom, that I do not want at the bottom of every email I send, that says that my emails are, are emails to me and emails from me on planning commission business are public and available, they belong to the people, and the people can see them.
We can inquire.
Thank you, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Bryan?
Based on some of my experience, getting emails from the city of Durham on topics that are totally unrelated to planning, I would worry a little bit that if we had an email address for planning commissioners, you might wind up getting more emails than you ever counted on, and some of them won't be related to planning. I still get an update every time the tech people do something. I used to get stuff about signing up for my medical benefits, stuff like that, so.
Getting those.
So I think we have to, it could really be a problem for staff to set up something that's just for planning, but is isolated from everything else.
I don't know, and that, and if that's in fact the case, then we'll just carry on, but I do feel like Hillary Clinton every time I get into an email exchange. I don't look like Hillary Clinton, but I feel a little bit like her.
Commissioner Johnson?
That's a good point, Commissioner Miller, because I'm sitting here like playing, you know, hypotheticals. It's like, our communications with citizens or anyone reaching out regarding cases is considered public information, but it could be the case where some personal relationship about, someone reaches out, my best friend, and is like, what do you think about, I hear a case is going on, just personally, what do you think about it? Is that deemed like a public record if I'm using my private, my, my personal Gmail account, and I'm having a, and so that's why, when you're saying that I think it is, there should be a way where there's a quarter, a portal, email address to something that's dedicated to residents or whoever reaching out to us through that vehicle, so that there won't be any gray area for us knowing when and what is and what is not public. Consider it public information, that has to be shared, when whoever asks for it, whenever.
Let me clarify one thing. If, gigantic if, someone had a city email, that does not mean that if you were to email something on your personal email about a case or a topic related to planning commission, that is also still a public record. So having a separate email does not then make your private email off limits.
No, no, what it does is, it just, if you, it's, it makes segregation easy if you are disciplined about how you use both.
Right.
But the discipline requirement doesn't go away. Sarah's right. And if this doesn't work out, I can set up another email account and just have one for everything and one for, for this only, that gets published on the, on the directory part of the website. So my emails start coming just to that, and I won't use it for anything else.
And that's the point I was only, right, so they have one go to you.
Well, we, we'll look forward to a staff update if that's a possibility, and if not, I think we've identified our backup solution. So anything else for this evening?
Could I just ask one quick question about that? Would this email, the emails that we receive from the public is, is something directly to us, and as long as it's just to us as individuals rather than as a board, that's okay? It's when we get into, like some things that I have mistakenly done, included everybody on the board, if there is something that needs to be tracked in the city system or county system or whatever, when it comes from staff, it is, whatever we say, is public Does that make sense? I, I'm just for keeping things simple.
So Commissioner Gibbs, I think you're actually confusing two different, different but related things. One is open meetings law. And open meetings law says that you cannot conduct business, which includes discussing either verbally in person or digitally, online through forums or in emails back and forth. You cannot discuss the business of the body outside of a published and advertised meeting.
That's among ourselves, that's open meetings.
Right.
Correct.
So that's open meetings.
Right.
The other is public records, which says basically, any, any record where you and your official duty as a planning commissioner are discussing business, if someone, if I'm a citizen and I email you, oh, please do something about this horrible case that's about to, you know, come before you, please don't vote for it, that is absolutely a public record, and someone could ask to retrieve that email from you. So it's two separate things.
Well.
Now, yes, certainly the emails that originate from our accounts are automatically, you know, we archive them and we keep them, but there may come a time when we get an open records request for some of you all's emails, and we have to reach out to you and say, please compile them all and give them to us. That's separate and a different issue than open meetings law.
Okay.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Great, seeing no other questions or comments, this meeting is officially adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.